We'll call to order the meeting of February 7th, Monday, February 7th. Let the record show that we have three commissioners present. I think that we'll have another one in just a minute here. Mr. Johnson is out of town tonight. Order of business, do we have any changes with the order of business?
Chairman Jackson, I would like to offer two changes to the order of business this evening. The first would be to add a consent agenda item, 2F. That would be the letter of engagement for KLJ Government Affairs Group, the letter which was distributed at your desks this evening. The second would be to strike 4C. We'd like to postpone that item until the next commission meeting. We'd like to make sure that we are communicating properly with the landowners, business owners, and county commission.
Any other changes to the agenda? Ditions or changes to the agenda? If not, let's have a motion to approve.
So move.
And a second?
I second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Okay, with that, we will move into the consent agenda. Is there anything there in the six items that we have that you'd like to discuss?
Advanced business methods equipment is located where?
The company itself?
Yep. The Dickinson operation?
I'm not sure if they have a Dickinson site, but we've received their equipment in the past, so.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any more discussion? If not, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, consent agenda is passed. We have nothing tonight on our timetable agenda, so we will move to item four, item 4A. We have a resolution that has to do with North Dakota City Government Week, and I think we'll ask our city administrator if he would read that resolution for us before we take action.
Thank you Chairman Jackson. The resolution is for the North Dakota City Government Week. It's a resolution of the City of Dickinson recognizing City Government Week from February 7th through 11th of 2011, and encouraging all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Whereas City Government is the government closest to the most citizens, and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas City Government is administered for and by its citizens, and is dependent upon public commitment to and the understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas City Government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits, and whereas North Dakota City Government Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by City Government in our lives, and whereas the North Dakota League of Cities and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information, and whereas the North Dakota City Government Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of North Dakota that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Dickinson as follows: Section 1, that the City of Dickinson encourages all citizens, City Government officials and employees, to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly; Section 2, that the City of Dickinson encourages educational partnerships between city, government, and schools; and Section 3, the City of Dickinson supports and encourages all city governments to actively promote and sponsor North Dakota City Government Week.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You know, I think it's timely, I think it was yesterday's Dickinson press that included an editorial about citizen involvement in local government, and as I recall, there was a statement made in that editorial about local government officials enjoying the feedback of citizens, and wanting feedback of citizens. And I think with this resolution, it's a good time to affirm that. I know I feel that way, and I think the rest of you probably do too. It's good to get that feedback. So with that, unless there's any other comments, we have resolution number 03-2011. If you like that resolution.
Move to approve.
Mr. Steiner, thank you.
Second.
And Mr. Landblum is second. Any discussion on the resolution? If not, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
And Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item 4B, which has to do with the Stark County Planning Commission. Mr. Kessel, are you going to introduce that discussion?
I certainly will, Chairman Jackson. The Stark County Planning and Zoning Commission has asked for a second city representative on their board, their planning and commission board. They did reference sentry code and county ordinance that does suggest two members of the city governing body be appointed to that board. We currently have one member in Rod Landblum appointed, and so to comply with their wishes, we would have to appoint a second governing board member. I know Commissioner Steiner has been a board member in the past. They do meet on the Monday preceding their county commission meeting at 4:00, and they generally have meetings that last approximately a half an hour to 45 minutes in length.
And Mr. Landblum is a member now?
Correct.
Mr. Kessel?
As I stated, I have been on that board, but I'd certainly give the opportunity to Mr. Oltman to be on that board.
I had a conversation with Mr. Kessel earlier today, and, you know, wondering about asking that two of the five commissioners sit on that board. I think there's some question that it may even be written into state law. I don't know that we know that for sure. One of the things Mr. Kessel and I talked about is the possibility that some future staff person might sit on that board along with one city commissioner, if that is permissible. We're talking about a planner, hiring a planner. That may or may not be appropriate, depending on how that position takes shape. Mr. Landblum, would you say that there's any urgency here? The board is functioning fine, I assume?
Oh, absolutely, it's functioning fine. It's just that when you try to get a quorum, there are times when the, last time we had some weather problems, and people were unable to make it in from the outside, outline areas. But I believe that the language here says it's from the governing body, and I'm not sure if you designate, you know, a staff person or designate, I think it still has to be one of the five commissioners. The other thought, there is a thought I have though, is that as much as you sit on the city zoning and planning board, that for sake of continuity, that you may be one of the prime candidates for that second spot, just to, you know, carry over from one board to the other, also to enhance the communication link that probably been lacking, you know, for quite some time, especially now when discussing annexation and development within our community.
Collectively, I know the five of us are asked to sit on a lot of different committees and boards, and I'd be interested in seeing if there's a way to see our way clear to satisfy the need with only one commissioner. Would you see a problem if we let this go a month or two until we know where we are with a planner, and then try to have some conversation with county commissioners?
I believe you probably should have a discussion with the state's attorney. He's the one that was pretty adamant about the fact that we're supposed to have two representatives from the county seat. I see no problem if you wanted to lay it by a month or so, but I believe that in the spirit of cooperation now, that we don't want to delay this thing much, you know, too long, especially when they're facing a number of developments in their areas too.
Mr. Kessel?
Another thought, Commissioner Jackson, is Stark County is not a home rural county, so deviation from state law would be quite difficult for them. They don't have the same powers that we do as a city, so compliance with state law is probably mandatory in their case.
I think that, you know, we are getting a city planner. I think that the city planner would be the obvious person that we would want on that. He's going to be familiar with the ordinance's zoning and so on. And his job, if you look under his job descriptions, is basically to do that, to bring the planning and zoning to the city. So, I mean, we got to wait a month before they get on board, and I think we should encourage the Attorney General to look at it that way, that city planners more than likely are the ones that are supposed to be on those boards.
One of the things that Mr. Kessel and I talked about today is just that. I think if that planner ends up being a city planner, then I think that's a possibility. But we have talked about the possibility of it being a joint city-county planner, in which case, then I don't think that would make sense. But if it's okay, let's try to let this go a month or two, but I wonder if somebody shouldn't have a conversation with Mr. Henning and explore the state law aspects of this, and make sure we know what we're talking about. One of you two, I suppose?
We'll gladly take care of that.
Is that okay with everybody? I think if we?
Also, just for a side note, there has been some discussion at the county commission level about the county looking into home rural that may change the complexion of some of these particular items that we're concerned about right now.
Okay, we'll leave that for now. Let's see, we have no public safety reports this evening, so we'll move to Section 6, Item 6A, the potential purchase of a loader. Who's going to make that presentation? Mr. Soren?
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. We did open bids for a new front-end loader recently. We received four bids. They came from Titan Machinery, Butler, Swanson Equipment, and RDO Equipment. We looked at all four of the bids that came in. Titan Machinery was the low bid. Second on the list was the machine from Butler, and then RDO with the John Deere. When we looked at the specifications that we spec'd for the loader, we found that all four of them lacked some aspects of the specifications that we requested in the machine. When we compared particularly the two lowest bids, which was from Titan and Butler, it became apparent that Butler was closest to the match that we had, and when we look at their potential buyback dollars in five years, it actually made that a negative, or actually a benefit to us about by $1,000, that they would buy it back for about $1,000 more than we actually paid for it, including the trade. And because of the value of the loader through time, and the specs that they had, we are recommending we purchase the Caterpillar 950H from Butler Machinery over the Case Loader. We feel it's a much better machine, it's going to serve our purposes, and it's closer to the specs that we had in our request.
Thank you, Mr. Soren. Any questions for Mr. Soren? For the benefit of the public as well as us, how are we paying for this? What's the?
It's budgeted as a lease purchase, so at the time, we would receive the machinery, we would have our finance director, Ms. Johnson, look at the best option to do that. We did budget 206,000, I believe the number is, for the machine. The bid was at 199,000, so it's within the budgeted amount that we have for the current budget, but it is expected we'd do a lease purchase on it.
Okay, thank you.
How soon can this get in service?
I believe when I asked that question, they're supposed to be getting them in this week, so.
How does the five-year guarantee work on the equipment?
Basically, they bid the price that after five years with the hours, that they'd be willing to buy that piece of equipment back. So if for some reason we weren't happy with it, we didn't like it, we're guaranteed, you know, they would buy it back for 150,000.
Okay.
Is this a replacing an existing unit, or are we just expanding our inventory?
There was some discussion about that. It is intended to replace an existing unit. We'd be looking at the trade option. I believe when they looked at that a little closer, and our street managers here, if there's further questions that he could answer, but the feeling was that maybe the loader's starting to use a little more oil than it should be, and we may be having more problems to try and keep that existing one, to expand the fleet for that purpose.
Can somebody tell me the age of the existing unit?
Ninety-nine.
It's 1999.
Okay.
About $10,400.
There is a grant program now, that just came out of the Department of Health, that will help pay for the new unit if we qualify, but the replacing unit has to be older than year 2000, so if it's 1999, that might be a possibility for us to take a look at.
If I may qualify that, it pays up to $40,000 of the new unit, not the all, not the whole unit.
Did I imply that? I'm sorry.
Any other questions for Mr. Soren? We need a motion to approve the purchase.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Move to approve the purchase of a Cat 950H loader from Butler Machinery.
I'd second it.
Any more discussion from commissioners? If not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oltman?
Aye.
And Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Soren, looks like you can probably keep going here.
Code enforcement report, you see, it's pretty, it's ahead of last year, but with the weather, and we've got two commercial permits on there, a value of $7 million. Probably a little bit more active in our plumbing and mechanical with replacing furnaces and a few items like that, but if there's any questions regarding that, I'd be happy to try and answer those. Don't have anything further really to add with that, other than, you know, we are visiting with a lot of people, and it sounds like construction season's going to be ready to roll as soon as they feel comfortable moving snow. It's not even waiting for it to melt anymore, so. Then there's some minutes in here from planning and zoning. With reference to some of the development, I think we've got about four preliminary plats going that were in the process, one final that got tabled that we're working on, which is just a replat, but certainly if there's any questions regarding any of those plats that are in process, I'd certainly try to answer those. One of them is the North Industries that will be coming back. There's a lot configurations that they're working on trying to change, that we're trying to change that to match potential buyers' needs, I guess, for lack of a better word. Trying to get the 40 acres that they're trying to get together, and a couple residential subdivisions, one being State's Fifth is moving, and then Cook subdivision up north, the town that we're working on, so. Other than that, I don't have anything further.
Mr. President? Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Soren, what are the, who are the two commercial structures?
I'd have to research to see exactly which ones are on the list. I don't know that offhand.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Soren? Thank you, Mr. Soren. Okay, we will move to Section 8, our city administrator's report. Looks like you have a few things to talk to us about tonight.
Thank you Chairman Jackson, Commissioner. I do have a few things. The first one is the Dickinson Outbuilding Construction Schedule. This is obviously a building that we've been monitoring for quite some time. You recently extended the opportunity for Mr. Brinkman to complete that structure until June 30th of 2011, this summer. To help you understand what his schedule would look like, he has provided us with a construction schedule that does comply with a June 30th, 2011 end date. If this construction schedule is delayed for any reason, this commission may be asked again to extend. If the commission chooses not to extend, there are opportunities for us to acquire that building, if you so choose. But I wanted to at least provide you with what Mr. Brinkman has provided upon my request for a schedule supporting a June 30th construction deadline, or completion deadline, excuse me. Are there any questions regarding that?
Mr. Coleen, in the contract, is there anything in there for penalty for like, like finish date per day?
No, there's not.
Is that something that we can put into the contract at this time?
Not unless it is agreed to by Mr. Brinkman.
But at the end of June, if it's not completed, and we decide that can become the city's building?
There are remedy provisions within the existing agreement.
As I understand it, if it's not complete by, what is, what's the date we gave him?
June 30th.
Yeah. He will have to come to us and ask for another amendment, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we decide not to give him one? Then it was the city's?
Well, there's a process that it would, could become the city's, yes.
How long would that take?
I don't think we know that at this point.
I think the point I'm trying to drive through here, that Mr. Brinkman is, his time is running short here, and we'd like to see that completed. I don't know if I see people going in there every day when there should be people in there working, whatever, but I think people are getting, this is the third extension. I don't know how many, fifth extension, yeah. I don't know how many more we want to go. I think it needs to be relayed back, but something at the end of June 30th, he may not want.
Mr. Landblum?
In talking with a couple of the potential tenants, there's a little point of, or there's a little degree of dissatisfaction, and that, I'm going to echo what Mr. Steiner's alluding to, is that I think it behooves us to keep Mr. Brinkman abreast at our concern of meeting that timeline, because I'm not sure there's going to be an extension, from my standpoint.
Commissioners, I have, I'm in fairly consistent contact with Mr. Brinkman. I have let him know that a extension, although possible, is, looks rather unlikely, based on the five that he's received previous, and that this schedule needs to be something that he does his best to adhere to. We are likely to meet and tour that building next week if he's on site. We've been trying to schedule a review of that building by myself, we just haven't connected with schedules this last week.
Okay.
So your sentiments have been conveyed.
Thank you.
Please continue, Mr. Kessel.
Recycling collection sites, as you know, the city set up a recycling committee that has been working diligently to try and make recommendations to this body regarding how best to move forward in the recycling arena. They did make a recommendation at their last meeting to move forward with four collection sites scattered throughout our community. Those collection sites would house the city's recycling efforts, which currently includes recycling used oil, cardboard, and grass clippings. On those sites, we would ask other entities to also provide containers for aluminum cans and other recyclable materials. They would be fenced, they would be lit, and they would have a security camera that would watch that site. The expected cost of making those four sites is right around $300,000. We're going to refine those numbers before we make a formal proposal to you at your next commission meeting, assuming you agree. So it may or may not be, it'll be around 300, give or take. We have a fund right now that has $354,000 in it. It is a recycling fund. It was created back in 1995 due to state legislation. We collected 20 cents per account per month, and with those collections, it accumulated to that balance. We currently are not collecting the 20 cents per account per month. We stopped that collection in 2007, but the interest of investing those funds has continued to grow that account value. So, next commission meeting, unless there's concerns, we'd like to have a formal recommendation for this body to act on in the creation of those sites, and we'll have a better presentation in terms of where they are and what they'll potentially look like, for your consideration. We've tried to spread those around so that there's one on the south, northeast, and west sides of our community. Any questions?
Mr. Kessel, I know that that committee has also talked about a public awareness campaign, a promotional campaign. Can we hear a little bit about that whenever you bring this back to us?
Certainly.
Can we hear about that too?
Certainly.
All right.
The amount that you were talking about, is that just for the development of those particular sites, or is that for the maintenance and the collection by the city?
That would be for the development of those sites. It would include the fencing, any collection bins that would be required, the leveling of the ground, the recycled material that would be placed down. They wouldn't be paved sites, meaning asphalt or concrete. We would just use recycled product that we have, either crushed concrete or crushed asphalt, as a base material, and then signage, and then of course, we'd have to pick those materials up occasionally as well.
Are you going to provide us a cost breakdown next meeting then?
Yes. Yep. We'll have that all broken down for you, so you can see those costs laid out.
Okay. Item two, I have them, deals with the discussion about curbside. Is, how much is taking, how much discussion is taking place on that particular element?
We have a newly formed company in the City of Dickinson that is trying to research the development of a recycling business. They are proposing curbside recycling. They are in their infancy, they're trying to get their feet under them, but they would like to see us do curbside recycling throughout the community. The main reason is they need, in order to gain the interest of buyers of the recycled materials, they need to have a sufficient volume in order to achieve buyer interest, and curbside recycling is one of the ways that they believe that they can achieve that volume. But like I say, they're working through their business plan and their business model, so we hope that we'll be hearing something more from them the next few months.
That proposal will be on a voluntary basis only?
Initially. That certainly is a part of the proposal. If the city commission would like to push that further, they certainly can, but initially, I think the thought process is a voluntary effort.
I would encourage voluntary, because I can't see where a mandatory recycling program would work in this community, or even get off the ground.
Mr. Weiss, Chair.
Mr. Kessel, we've heard about the expenses on, is there an estimated income of what those four sites would generate?
Currently, the price of cardboard vacillates a great deal. It is profitable at this time, it not always is. We try to store that material up until prices do support a profit. We try to store that material up until prices do support a profit. Used oil, there is a market for that as a heating fluid, so we hope that we can resell that oil as we do. And then, the real benefit to recycling is removing that material from our waste stream and getting it out of our landfill. So even though there may not be a profit, so to speak, in pursuing this endeavor, if you add in the cost that we avoid, then there may be a break-even point, and hence the real reasons to pursue recycling. I don't have a number for you broken down, just because of the volatility of the secondary markets.
Okay. Thank you.
The other thing that will likely occur is there are nonprofit groups today who are doing recycling, and at least one of those nonprofit groups I know is interested in setting up at these city collection sites to increase their take, if you will, on recycled products, again, on a voluntary basis. I'm approached by a lot of people in Dickinson who carry their recycled goods to Bismarck to be recycled, and they don't, they aren't asking for curbside. They're just asking for a place in Dickinson that they can handle their recycling. So hopefully, this will go a long way.
In your meetings, have you discussed biomass, where we take the wood products and utilize that?
You know, a little bit, a little bit, but there's really been a, an emphasis to walk before we start running with recycling, and we think that this proposal is a way to walk and get people on board, the whole recycling concept.
Okay. Because you were talking about filling the landfill, and you know, there's a lot of material that winds up there that could probably be used in a biomass activity?
Yeah, Commissioner Landlum, I'm glad you brought that up. I did tour the Bismarck site, the new aquatic center, where they do use biomass as the heating for that building. Did get to visit that personally and see the process. That is actually something that we're considering for the Public Works Building. If that gets constructed, is possibly using biomass to heat that facility.
Okay, Mr. Kessel.
Thank you. The next item that I have, then, is the comprehensive plan, and with a focus on transportation. We've talked a few times about that. The state DOT has provided us a grant of $250,000 to complete this process. Engineer Soren and I went through a request for proposal. We would like to issue this RFP to the engineering and planning outfits, so that we can gain bids, and then bring those bids back to the city commission with a recommendation to proceed. This RFP proposal was based upon one that was completed in the city of Williston, and we certainly have heard a lot about the successes of their comprehensive plan, so we hope that we'll have the same. It is of note that this is a budgeted expense. There is a match requirement. We did budget for that match requirement. The only portion we have not budgeted for is the infrastructure modeling that we would like to complete as well. What that does for us is it takes our water and sewer lines, and using land use planning, projects out where lift stations, water towers, things of that nature, interceptor sewers, all of those types of things would be projected, so that we understand where, what we would need to do to develop those areas. They would also identify bottlenecks in our current system, in case a pipe needs to be upsized due to growth downstream. I don't have an expected expense for that. A ballpark would be in that 150,000 range, so that's something that the city commission would have to consider. That is not budgeted for currently. But the benefits of having that done would be, we believe anyways, would believe, we would get the return on that many times over.
Okay, and I believe, Mr. Kessel, we've already, as a body, approved the completion of this comprehensive plan.
Yes.
You're just letting us know tonight that you're going to proceed now?
Correct.
Okay.
The next item, then, is the transit building contracts. As you know, we've talked about this building several times. The bidding was completed. It is a state project. At the end of the construction period, we will be asked to be the owner of this building. We have paid for some of the engineering costs related to having the building conceived. We are at the point where they're going to break ground this spring, and there are three contracts contained in here for the subs on the project. Two local subs, Denny's Electric, Central Mechanical, and Two's Construction are the three contractors that'll be working on making that building a reality. Again, you've already budgeted the engineering portion. The construction of the building has been budgeted through the state DOT using stimulus funds, so there should be no further investment on behalf of the city, unless, there's one contingency. There's some brick exterior structures that, if there's money left at the end of the project, it was bid as an alternate or an option, so there may be some dollars that could be requested by us to complete that portion of the project. I think the total is $15,000, and so the hope is that through the construction process, there'll be enough funds left to pay for that, but if not, we may be asked to fund that piece, that option. Any questions about the transit building?
What kind of timeframe are you looking at?
I believe the construction table is completion by October 31st, if I'm not mistaken.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Is there a penalty clause included in the contracts?
I'd have to review those. Commissioner Landlum, I'm not sure.
It was a project bid by the DOT, and the DOT generally does do that.
They do.
Generally. I don't know specifically in this case.
I will say the DOT is not used to bidding buildings, though, so there may be a departure in this case.
Would you check on that, please?
Well, we have one of the engineering firms. Mr. Two's is in the audience. Are you going to be penalized if you don't get your portion of the building constructed on a timely basis?
500 days.
Thank you.
For October 31st.
The next item is Wells Fargo Downtown Land. The Wells Fargo Bank has made a strategic decision not to build on their current location in downtown. Therefore, they've made that land available. Because of the interest in downtown parking, I believe the city is interested in that land, in acquiring it, and probably turning that into additional downtown parking places. If you have no objections, I would like to begin negotiations with Wells Fargo and bring forth a proposal, a purchase proposal, hopefully at our next commission meeting. The next item that I have is one that's not on your agenda.
Excuse me. Was there any, is there any commercial interest in acquiring that, or we just have the first opportunity?
They've approached us and asked us if we are interested, and because it's immediately north of the Elks building, there's interest, not only from a downtown parking perspective, but certainly interest depending on whether or not we are the eventual owners of that building. As we've discussed earlier at this meeting, there is the potential that the city of Dickinson could own that building, and so it'd be in our best interest, I believe, to own the parking lot directly north of it.
But what you're saying right now, Mr. Kessel, is that you're just going to have enough conversation to have some kind of an idea on cost before we get serious about this kind of, this proposal?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I would mention that they do have a second site north that's at the intersection of Second Street and the alley. They owned three lots, half of them anyways, from an east-west. There's an attorney's outfit on one corner, and that attorney is interested in acquiring the remaining half of those lots. So those, if the attorney doesn't acquire those, we may. But they, you know, we would defer to the attorney in that instance, because he currently has a lease on those spaces and is using them for parking.
That's why I was kind of curious about the commercial interest, if there was any.
There is on that, for sure, yeah. I'm not sure if there's any express commercial interest, or if they sought commercial interest on the other land. My last item, then, that is not on your agenda, is a legislative update and report. I have distributed that report to you. It's on your desks. I'm certainly not going to take the time to go over all of these bills individually. I would like to say that, you know, trying to, to maintain, you know, a good report for you on all of the bills that are introduced, certainly not all of them have an interest on our behalf, but I do use five resources to try to stay on top of the ones that may affect us here in the city of Dickinson. Those five resources are the North Dakota League of Cities. We still do have those conference calls every Friday afternoon. I would like to invite you to attend those meetings. We have them here at City Hall. We go through the bills that were testified on that week, and then we also discuss the bills that are slated for testimony in the upcoming week. The North Dakota Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties is another entity that I use for information, along with the North Dakota Water Association, the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund, and the North Dakota Legislative Website. That website has a wealth of information, and if you want to know specifically, you know, language that's included in any of these bills, I would encourage you to go to that website and review them individually. I do want to bring a few of them up. The House Bill 1293, it is one that without the League of Cities is opposing. It would limit increases in property taxes levied to 3% of each parcel. So in other words, if a mass appraisal was completed on, let's say, apartment complexes, we certainly, we did that just a year and a half ago, I believe, but let's say that those apartment complexes' value increased by seven or eight or 10%, this law, if passed, or this bill if passed into law, would limit that increase to 3%. That is obviously something that would be difficult, because the needs would then be spread in the terms of mills. There's two ways that make up a hosp, excuse me, a property tax expense. Those are mills and value. If you cap value, then that means mills could be adjusted to replace the cap on value. The other one is House Bill 1294. This is a prohibition against home rule cities, and it basically eviscerates home rule. This is something that the city of Dickinson and several other cities have benefited from, home rule status. We heard earlier this evening that Stark Development, or excuse me, Stark County is maybe seeking home rule for the county, so there's benefits. Most cities sought home rule status when sales tax, local option sales tax, became available. So we would like to see home rule continue for cities in North Dakota. House Bill 1458, this is a infrastructure bill. It is an alternative to the governor's budget. The House Bill 1013 is the governor's budget related to infrastructure support. 1458 is being opposed by the North Dakota Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties for several reasons. One of those reasons is it limits small cities' infrastructure from 65, that's in the governor's, or 65 million that's in the governor's budget, to only 18 million. I personally know of, the city of Stanley and Watford City have needs that exceed 18 million, I believe, in just those two communities, if they're fully funded, so that doesn't appear to be anywhere near what the needs are faced in western North Dakota. Some of the bills that are supported is Senate Bill 2340. If you recall, last session, there were dollars that we could apply for as a city to reimburse us for some snow removal activities, if certain parameters were met. I believe they were, you had to have 400% of snow fall over the last three years. You had to have 200% of your budget expended, certain things like that. Senate Bill 2340 appropriates $19 million for emergency snow removal operations for counties, cities, and townships. House Bill 1278 is one that would allow traffic fines to be set at twice the existing state level. If you recall, there was a class action lawsuit in Fargo that eliminated the city's ability to use home rule to raise traffic fines beyond the state, and so this would allow us to raise them, but only to double what the state level is. Senate Bill 2180 and House Bill 1245 are very similar. They basically extend the city lodging tax to stays beyond 30 days. Right now, if somebody stays in the, in a hotel room for more than 30 days, they are exempt from lodging tax. And then, House Bill 1013, as I mentioned, is the governor's support for infrastructure grants in western North Dakota. It would raise the impact grants from 8 million per biennium to 100 million per biennium, with a, excuse me, 35 million of that to hub cities, Dickinson, Williston, and Minot, the remaining 65 million for schools, parks, counties, townships, and other political subdivisions. Some of the ones that are being monitored are a House Continuing Resolution 3008. I just want to mention that one to you. This isn't a bill, but it is a resolution, and it's urging Congress to clearly delegate responsibility for the regulation of hydraulic fracturing to the states. There's probably two items that would affect oil development, continued oil development in western North Dakota. Number one's the price of oil, but number two is EPA regulation of fracturing. There's many different thoughts regarding that. I think diesel fuel and fracturing right now is getting a lot of attention nationwide. House Bill 1420 would reduce the oil extraction tax on new wells from 6 and 1/2 to 4 and 1/2, and House Bill 1467 would have a similar effect, but it has price triggers in it, and so that the extraction tax would actually decline as the cost per barrel declines as well. So that's, that's an interesting one. So that is a brief review of the legislative report. There's certainly many, many other bills, not all affect the city. If you have one that you're aware of, that you would like me to track specifically, I'd love to hear that, and I'll be happy to put it on the report and make sure that we monitor that closely. So, any questions about any of these specifically?
Any questions for Mr. Kessel?
Not, that concludes my report.
I have one, Mr. Kessel. These are, you're showing the bills opposed and the bills supported, and that is by the League of Cities, correct?
For the most part. It's one of those entities that are listed above. It may be an association of oil and gas producing counties or other, yeah.
Okay. Do you anticipate this commission needing to take a certain stand, so that you can testify or one of us can on any of these bills? Will that be necessary as time goes by?
It may be, and I think the bills specifically are going to be House Bill 1458 and House Bill 1013. Those are the infrastructure support bills. The one is the governor's proposal, 1013, and the other is the legislative one. At some point, we're going to have to make a choice on which we would like to see. Right now, each slates the city of Dickinson for about $5 million per year, but one is more onerous than the other in terms of other things that it does. Right now, the oil and gas producing counties stands opposed to 1458 and in the support of 1013, but we are a member of that organization, but it doesn't mean we may support that stand. So I'd encourage you to at least look those two bills up specifically. 1458 is rather lengthy. I think it's 16 pages, but it would be well worth a read and a discussion by this group.
I think we probably have a lot of confidence in your judgment as to what's best for the city of Dickinson, but I also think that if you do have to testify, being able to say that we did take formal action on a certain bill might be worthwhile.
The current process that I use is, and I think this body has approved that for use in the past, is I currently contact the- use in the past, is I currently contact the mayor. We discuss the bill stance on behalf of the city. I actually prefer that he do the testimony. Elected officials are, have more impactful at the state legislature. If he's not able to, then I, of course, do that. And I've tried to indicate the bills that I have testified on. There is another that I did testify on that I neglected to put in there, and it was related to a building codes issue. I was asked by our building official to testify on behalf of his organization, and I did do so. So that's the current process, is go to the mayor and ask.
Any other questions for Mr. Kessel? Anything in his report? If not, that completes our stated agenda. Do any city commissioners have anything else that they want to bring forth this evening?
Mr. Chairman, it's probably just more an observation, but last week, when we had a couple of days of 35-degree weather, and what I guess I'm going to point out is, we're going from one problem to another, but the major thoroughfares were melt, had melted pretty well, and kind of exhibited the problems we're going to be facing here this spring in the nature of potholes, and also a couple of places where contractors had dug up and it's settled and it's got to be fixed, too, but there's going to be a lot of street maintenance besides what we're doing right now for the winter with the snow removal. It, I have no envy for our street crews.
Never-ending job. Anything else?
Vice Chair. Mr. Soren, can they get out there and repair these potholes that we're seeing now in this type of weather? I mean, is it, is it just not going to work?
You can get out and do some things, but it's not going to work. I mean, we've got to try and do what we can to minimize the impacts, but with the weather that we've got right now, it becomes very difficult to try and get anything to stay
We've got to wait till the weather gets about 32 constant, dry up.
in place. Yeah. And you know, they can patch it, it'll fix it for a little bit, but they'll be back. I mean, it's very difficult to find anything that's going to stay in place right now.
Can you just run an update real quick of the projects that are coming up this year, this summer, street projects?
Street projects, currently, the one that's under design is our Urban Road Project, which is 18th Avenue East from the Business Loop north to Ninth, Ninth Street. It's a gravel road right now in a developing part of town. It will be certainly a needed addition to the area as traffic increases with the intersection of 10th Avenue East and Villard. This gives another avenue for folks in that part of town to get out to the Business Loop. We've got several water main projects that we're looking at and working on, and I don't have the exact streets for you right now, but we had a project we started last year. It's not completed. We'll be starting that this spring when we can move forward. We've just closed the RFP portion for our wastewater design project. Today, we've got the applications in on that, so we'll need to be going through those and making a selection, as well as a master plan on the landfill. We're continuing to work with the highway department on Highway 22. One of the big projects they have out here is from the city limits north to the county line. They're taking comments on that one right now for widening turn lanes and, you know, looking at potential traffic signals. So that project is in the forefront. The design phase is on Highway 22 through town. I believe that's supposed to be bid in late November.
Okay, so that was a point, Villard and 22, so that's just going to be repaired this year. There's not going to be any, nothing new.
And Villard, I believe, has actually been pushed out to 2013 at this point. We're still fighting that issue. However, the challenge the DOT is having is certainly the issues on Highway 22, 85, and a lot of other areas throughout the western part of the state, and trying to prioritize the funding creates challenges. So, yes, we do have some patching issues that are going to be on those to try and maintain them for the next couple of years, because we don't have a definite project coming up on those specific. So with that rundown, you can see there's a lot of activity, and I've missed several, I'm sure, that we're still working on, Seal Co. project, Mill and Overlay projects, but...
Okay, thank you.
And what we're talking about, all the streets and everything, what about weight limits come this spring when the thaw comes about? It's going to be a major problem with the enforcement part of it, too, isn't it?
That'll always be a challenge. I don't know if Chief Rommel has an update on, you know, I know they're working on, you know, the weight limits and the weight enforcement aspect of things, but certainly with all the construction activity that we have, we have continuing challenges in trying to control the trucks that are hitting our residential areas, and certainly the construction activities start sooner and is a lot more. And through the spring, when the frost comes out, that can really be a real burden on infrastructure.
Okay. Anybody from the public have any issues they want to bring before the commission? Anything from the public? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second?
I don't know if I feel comfortable with this. This is not even an hour.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.